Alright. You ready? Yep. So, welcome to the School of Sunderland Elementary School Committee meeting for November 14th, 2017. And I don't know if it's officially winter, but it's feeling like it. We had the snow flurry even yesterday or the day before.
Kids were very excited.
I bet.
Yeah.
I bet. You know, bring in the snow, a certain amount of snow.
I lost my class for 10 minutes.
Did you? Oh, did you?
That's at the high school level.
Wow!
They're like outside taking pictures. It's snowing!
Right, so magnify that by five or 10 for elementary.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyway. So, the minutes from October. It was a relatively brief, kind of air bones meeting here in October because it was the joint meeting. So, motion of the minutes, motion of approval, second.
Can I? They look good, but I wasn't there.
You can, I'll second. You can vote. Actually, you don't have to. You can vote to approve. It's not saying like that you are saying that that, you're up to you. Anyway, all in favor? Against? Abstentions? Alright, there we go. Alright, and then we have financial warrants and statements. And poor Patty is in Florida right now.
Well, there were eight warrants for totaling $79,881 and three cents. And they're right in front of her.
Obviously, if we have questions or concerns about any of, anything on the financial statements, we could note now and then follow up with Patty in the next, you know, in between meetings and resolve it, you know, at the next meeting.
She'll be back Monday.
She didn't leave anything of concern or note at all.
Not with the other side of it.
Any, you want to take a minute, more to look at? Yeah, quick look and, I'm going into the next.
Do we do a lot of general repairs to the building?
Do you want to take that?
Yeah, we've been addressing a number of the issues. We've had many door issues, exterior door issues. So, we've had a carpenter come in and replace a couple doors by the custodian's entrance, cafeteria entrance, and then he gave all the other exterior doors a tune-up. And it's looking like we're going to need to replace the hardware for some of them. They're getting a little bit tired. And what's happening is the doors are not shutting all the way after being opened. So, he lubricated all the fixtures and they're working a lot better now, but it's, they're in need of, not completely new doors, but new hardware.
Is that kind of the same issue that Frontier is experiencing too?
Yes.
The same mechanical issues?
The third doors are closing. The problem over there has to do with, you know, security mostly. There is just, everyone has a key. What is happening here too, I think Bob kind of mentioned, and he mentioned it over there too, like the doors are okay until like this much to the bottom and whatever comes off the ground. So, the metal along the sides, they like to weld in new pieces and, you know, there's a little bit of rot going on in the doors. I'm not positive that's happening. The bottoms of your doors rotted, your exterior doors.
Not so much the bottoms of the doors, but just the threshold in general.
Wear and tear?
Yeah.
But no security issues, right? At this point?
Well, if they're not, if they're not closing properly, then that's a security issue.
True, but we can still lock them, I mean?
Yes, yes, they're, they all lock. But when, when the pin inside doesn't engage with, when the handle is pushed all the way open, or when it's not pushed all the way open, when it, when it comes to close at the top, it kind of just gets stuck a little bit. So, it's being addressed.
Alright. Anything on the doors?
Not really.
It's not really comes out to me at this point.
So, while we're on that, the financial stuff, so I can follow up with Patty, but I guess if we can, you know, knowing this year is, is tough, if we can get some ideas in December, I know that's ahead of our usual schedule.
No, totally, and that, and that is, I've redone my goals, but that is one of my goals, is to take more of the charge in what happens instead of waiting. I have some forms, I meet with the principals every two weeks, and I'd like to get that going. And the first step to that is figuring out who works in the building, every single body in the building, every single person, what the contracted rates are that we need to raise those salaries, and then where are we from there? What, again, what can we live with and what can we live without? But it's really you as the school committee to direct us so we can give you some idea. And I'm hoping in December to have some kind of idea where we are.
Yeah, I mean, and like if you can give us in the different areas, like here's where we are, obviously, it's hugely driven by personnel, but, you know, in terms of what we're expecting increase there, you know, this is in technology building, blah, 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 and then we can start to...
And so, when I did the presentation for the, you know, the Bob proposal, which is really just to get a discussion going, to get a subcommittee, when I did that, you know, I realized, and for you folks, so Frontier Regional has $80,000 a year for their regular maintenance of their building. But out of that, 20, 25, I forget the exact numbers, 25, $30,000 of that, $80,000 goes to having the alarms checked, you know, to having the, all the, you know, the...
Just routine things that have to happen every year.
Every year that have to be certified every single year. And then that leaves us with a certain amount, and consequently, people will say, well, there's deferred maintenance, but it's not. It's, it takes that kind of money just to keep it going. And I know that this summer, Bob made a concerted effort, not my request and Ben's request, but he brought extra people over, they power washed the building, they did a lot of work, the hallways, and there was a lot of painting done, a lot of repair, repair in the halls, the walls in the cafeteria. So, these are the things, when I work at Sunderland, they do so much, so well, very little money. And it's, we need to, the facility itself needs a lot of attention.
No, you know, budget realities aside, you know, the select board has certainly been, I mean, that's been something that, a drum that they've been beating for years in terms of just overall for the town to, you know, to have funds for, because, you know, these capital maintenance projects are, you know, they don't go away, and, but we don't put any money really aside from them, and then we try and do them out of operating expenses, but it's, it's so unpredictable. So, I think to keep, you know, presenting them with that information and, and have them help us try to see, you know, I mean, along with, like I said, I think for the whole town, you know, an effort to see, you know, in terms of capital, you know, funding that's...
I think one of the things that I'd like to do, and I've done a lot of reflecting since the last meeting, what I'd like to do, and I don't know how well I'll be able to do it, but I think I, I'm up to it, I'd like to be able to explain, you know, to illustrate and explain visually, where is the money going? So, this is what we have for the school, and we know the school is 70% of the town, we know that. But this is what we have for the school, this is the pie. How much is going for personnel? How much is going for maintenance? What about academics? What about all the, the resources, the online subscriptions, you know, what about that? What about this and that? And then what leaves, you know, how much does that leave for us to really have discretionary spending? You know, for things like, you know, painting the ceiling, or Bruce pushing up this, or...
And with that, we don't really know until the end of the year how much money is going to be left over. So, you know, the, however much money is in the building maintenance line item, you can't really set that cost early on because other things might come up.
We always estimate the budget, all, you know, the regular expenses, and then we have the next amount that we have for maintenance. However, barring any catastrophe, like a water heater blowing up, that's 15,000, 20,000 or something like that, barring those things, we do have some funds at the end of the year, and then you tell us, help us figure out how we're going to spend those funds to help the greater good of the building.
I think, yeah, I think that kind of, that breakdown would be nice. I think the, you know, looking at some of these things over time, you know, and especially, you know, kind of, you know, on a, per, you know, per pupil basis, you know, through the number of students we have in the denominator, and we know that we've had an increasing number of students in recent years, and, you know, so, so that, again, just, you know, just to show that it's not like money's being spent crazily here, obviously.
And I, I struggle for a way to tell the stakeholders of Sunderland, the, and the select board and the finance committee, what you're able, what you're accomplishing in this building, more than any other building I've ever worked in, what you're accomplishing in this building is amazing considering the resources you have and the demands you have.
Well, yeah, and I, I think, you know, maybe I got sidetracked in the town meeting last year somehow in terms of certain, some of the questions that I think led down past that were probably less productive to spend a lot of time on, although, you know, when somebody asks a question, you want to answer it, but at the same time, I felt like, you know, the message was we have 35, 40%, whatever it was, more kids in this building than we did, you know, a handful of years ago. Hence, the increase in our costs, like...
It's a direct correlation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a pretty simple story. And somehow, you know, I felt like by the end of that meeting, not that, you know, there's ever a problem getting, passing the budget at a meeting, I think, you know, but, but still, if I, if that was, if there were still people in that, in the end of that meeting who didn't understand why our budget was gone, had gone up, you know, then, I mean, you know, some people just will never want to hear it, and then I'm sure I, we could do a better job, you know, just making sure that that story is well heard, understood.
And I think I'd like some, some more support and advice on how, how can I approach the select committee, the finance committee, and, and help them understand what it is we're doing? I, I'm wondering if they...
I think they understand.
Yeah.
You do?
I agree.
Yeah.
You...
I do. I, you know, we've had different kinds of relationships with the select board and finance committee over the years, but I feel like they understand it very well, and they understand the cost to, to, you know, cutting, making cuts to the budget when we don't have anything to cut other than really cutting services, making classes, class sizes, you know, to a size where parents start thinking about choicing their kids out, you know, and they know what happened when we went through that the last time, so.
I'm hoping for a much better budget here for Sunderland.
Yeah, let's, yeah, I mean, and that's why, I think, you know, I want to be, I don't want to be doom and gloom right now, because I think, you know, there's a lot of time to get ahead of it and, and make it work well. But, but I just think because of the tough situation, we got to start early. And I know that's tricky because there's all kinds of information that we don't get until further down the road, and we'll have no idea what we're going to get from this day. You know, we just have to guess, you know, make our best guess and things like that.
I think whatever approach that we take, or you take, or we, the breakdown presentation you were kind of alluding to, I think would be important to have a balanced approach of explaining what the needs are, but also highlighting what the accomplishments are. I think that's one of the things that we had talked about with Frontier when we're asking, looking for money, we highlighted all the needs, and it almost came off like we weren't doing anything.
Yeah.
The building is almost falling apart when we, so I think all the improvements that happened in the last few years, I think would also be important to highlight. So, we, we do need this, but it's not as if we are being remiss in our duties from year to year to year.
Right, yeah, yeah. And then highlight the accomplishments of, you know, the school in general.
Yeah, I would say both academically and then in terms of like capital improvements as well.
Yeah.
Thank you, and I, that's great advice, because I did, we did a big presentation, and it went, I thought very, fairly well, quite well, but it's true that it kind of just focused on the negative, but my whole point was we need this, see what it looks like. But, you know, we, I guess, you know, it's hard, you know, I know and I take for granted that we're, that, that this is a wonderful district, Union 38, Frontier, better than wonderful, we're, we are, I would say, stars in this area, and we provide not only, you know, the athletics, but we have great fine, incredible fine arts and amazing academics. Our academics are right out there. But it's something that I may take for granted. For whatever reason, you know, I just, Sunderland is the one that just, I don't know, just touches me, I don't know. But you're right, and I think I could definitely make sure to put that stuff in there.
Well, I think, you know, again, we just, we just don't want to, we, we want to build on what we've been doing and, and then not take the legs out from under it and, and then have to, you know, rebuild all over again.
I've been meeting with the four town administrators, and Sherry is great, and she's a wonderful, Sherry Patch is a wonderful resource for me, and she also indicated that they, they want to see more than just a bunch of numbers, you know, they really want to understand what it is. And Whately has also asked for that, what is it that we do? What is it really, you know, about? And she really wanted more of a narrative story to go with the numbers, and I'm hearing that.
And I think that we, you know, like some of the presentations that we get here in the school committee over the years, you know, just very short versions of that, but like, you know, what, you know, happens in terms of curriculum in the school, I mean, you know, and keeping up with, you know, curriculum changes and curriculum requirements and things like that, and, you know, those kinds of stories that people don't, you know, again, it just kind of goes under the radar and nobody even thinks about all that work that has to be done, you know, by, by administrators and teachers and...
Unless you see an article in the newspaper that shows Sunderland scores right up there, you know, but the MCAS is only one, one assessment that we could do, hopefully, but it's true. Unless you're in the building, you don't really know the relationships these people have. And I've spoken to this before, you know, it was outside in the spring, and just the relationships with the adults bringing the children onto the bus, and, you know, that kind of caring and that personal kind of connection that they have with the kids, and just the, the whole staff, the way they work together. But I, I will really work on a presentation that really tries to express all of that, the human piece as well as what we're doing with the money. And I will be, I will ask for advice and input.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Before it goes on the road.
Let us know how we can help that.
Yes, thank you, yes.
Alright. Public comment? Do you hear for public comment, or do you, to, or just, I mean, glad that you're here. Let me say that first, for starters.
My name is Peter Gagaran, and I am, I guess I'd say I'm interested in your F vacant spot on the school committee.
Alright.
And I don't know whether you got somebody lined up or not, because usually the process is somebody twists somebody's arm and then you have to...
That's usually what it comes down to.
Sign up, so I didn't know whether you already had that problem taken care of or not. My, my background is, very briefly, is that I've lived in town for 33 years, have no kids, so I've never been a parent. I have been involved in town affairs fairly extensively. I was on the finance committee in the 1990s for seven years and chairman over for five, so I dealt with a lot of school budgets. And then after I got, there were term limits there, so I got off of that, and then I was on the school council, not the school committee, but the school council for about four years as a community, one of the community members. I don't know if the rules are still the same, but you had to have a couple of community members, one of those, and then I got off of that, and I got talked into being on the library building committee and was deeply involved in building the new, within the new library. I think it was 2004 we finished it, and then I, basically, things got busy enough for me at work in the wintertime because I had a tax business, and so the wintertime was the worst time, and I just said, okay, that's it for town stuff, I'm not doing town stuff for a while, and I'm now retired, so I thought, I've been sort of thinking about it, and I have no interest in trying to get on the board of selectmen, and I used to run the finance committee, but a lot has changed, and I, I don't think they're at all effective currently, but I don't want to put out the effort to get involved. I mean, I've sort of been there and done that, and I'm not sure I want to, it was a lot, when I was on it, it was, I spent a lot of time on it, and because that's what was needed and so on. I've always had an interest in the school, I thought a school was an important part of the town, I thought the school was, I mean, it's a key part of the town, and it's important that, that people think positively about the school. I also always felt when I was on the finance committee that I, it was really frustrating dealing with the school budget here, and even more frustrating dealing with the Frontier school budget, and that was more frustrating because the rules that if three out of four towns passed the budget, you were stuck regardless, and it just drove, drove us nuts in terms of trying to plan. But in terms of the elementary school budget, it was frustrating because the, it's a situation where, I always thought a budget was, budget served a couple of different purposes, and one was just, you know, legally a budget, you set up line items, this is what you are allowed to spend, and if you spend more than this without, you know, proper approvals, you've broken the law, you know, to a certain extent. I don't, I mean, I, we never had that case, but basically, this is what you're allowed to spend, and you set up a budget accordingly with the proper, you know, breakdown into categories, you don't want to go too far down, but you want to go somewhat down, so you have the amount of control, because then budget is also a management tool, and so you have the proper way of both controlling expenditures, but also managing how you, you run the operation and setting priorities. And while that all may take place within the school operation, in the school committee and the central office, all those procedures in terms of running the budget here for the school over the course of a year, the, from the point of view of the finance committee, or I think the selectmen would be the same way, there was a sense that, you know, there was one number. You've got one number, which was the line, that's all we voted on, is one number for the school for the year, and that's all you have, and from a sort of, you know, management point of view, that's a very unsatisfying situation. And I think it actually, I'm not saying that needs to change, or I think because that's the way it is, so you accept that, but I think that there are times when the school doesn't do itself a service in the way it, you know, it, it carefully guards its, its own ability to change whatever it wants to change within the budget, and I think sometimes it does it disservice because it doesn't, you know, nobody else then owns these problems. You have a problem, it's your problem, basically, you know, as the year goes on, oops, you're out of money, well, that's your problem, you got the budget, you know, you figure out how to move the money around. Whereas, to the extent that, you know, other folks in town, the selectmen and finance committee especially, you know, own the problem, they've been involved in it, they, they've been kept in, in the loop, then their sense of, you know, sharing the problem, of figuring out how you're going to deal with it is significantly different, and I think significantly better. When we were building a library, we, and the actual building was a five-year project, but the only, the building was actually just in a 12-month period, and, and we had construction meetings once a week with architects and the builders, and myself and the chair of the committee would go to those construction meetings, and I would then sit down, it was like Wednesday, early afternoon, and then I'd sit down, and by Wednesday evening, I would have sent a letter to the selectmen every week saying, here's what's going on, here are the issues we're facing, you know, here's, here's what's going well, here's what problems we're having, so on, just each week, you know, an update. And so, and then I'd go in an actual meeting, maybe every, you know, month or month and a half or something like that, but then when we had a, you know, if we, if we ran out of problems, they were already on board, because they, they were, you know, they were part of it, even though they weren't running the project, the building committee was running the project. And I think that to me was, it was extraordinarily useful keeping them in the loop. So, when I heard your discussion a few minutes ago about, you know, how to get, what essentially boils down to more support for your budget and more support for your program, if the approach is to, you know, at some point say, well, you know, as long as things are going well, it's our budget, and, you know, you, sorry, by law, we're the only ones you get to decide, but then whoops, when something goes bad, now we, you know, oh, we need more money, and sorry, but you don't get to say anything about how we got here, is, is not really the most productive way to do business. And, you know, like many things of this sort, it takes more work to get other people on board, okay? And it takes some time giving up your own sense of authority, but often the rewards are significant in what happens when crunch time comes. So, anyway, these are just some of my thoughts. I have a interest in being on the school committee. If you have somebody else, I'm not going to lose any sleep over, I'd probably be one of these things like, thank God I don't have to do that, but, you know, I just, so that's why I'm here.
I can't speak, you know, for certain, but as far as I know, I think we would be in that position you described about going out and finding some arms to twist. So, and, so certainly welcome the, you know, putting yourself up, and I think the process is we'll be having a joint, exactly, a joint meeting with the select, select board and, and then, so knowing that you would be willing to serve, be a good piece of effort, you know, welcome.
So, I don't know, you, you need something in writing or anything?
I think that might be the case, it might be good to, Wendy would know for sure, or Deanna, if you don't.
I believe it's a, a letter of interest submitted to the town administrator.
Okay.
I haven't seen, I didn't see anything in the minute heater indicating anything about the process.
I think something may have just gone out yesterday.
Yeah.
In this, like, board meeting minutes of not being... In this, like, board meeting minutes have not been put on the list for a lifetime.
Yeah, something was posted.
I think I could try to find it.
You don't have to now, I can go check the town hall.
But yeah, definitely, um, try to see Sherry Patch and, and, yeah.
I know who he's with.
Yeah, good. Great. And I think, you know, philosophically, uh, well, it doesn't necessarily matter, but it, but, but, but we're in agreement in terms of, I think, you know, it's, it's a joint project with the whole town, uh, here and, and, uh, certainly as, you know, chair of the committee, I've, I've tried to reinforce that, you know, at every step of the way and, um, try to work closely with the select board and, you know, the finance committee as much as possible and, and, you know, and try, and, you know, and with, you know, a very open book. Um, and, uh, you know, Patty's been, you know, working with us to like, on all the different ways of, of showing the, the financial information. So I mean, once upon a time when I first started, things were already netted out of other sources of funding, uh, which drove me crazy because then all of a sudden when those fun, sources of funding went away and that budget line went like that and people are like, well, I would saw that increase. And it wasn't actually an increase in the cost, it was just that some other source of funding. So things like that, you know, just to have, you know, as much transparency for everybody, including us here, um, to, to best manage this and, and work together on, on long-term solutions to challenges we have and, and, and like you said, prioritize, um, you know, the best we can, so.
I'll go for it.
Yeah, thanks.
So that's only, that's my vote.
Perfect.
All right. All right, unfinished business? Uh, we have. Update on the school committee member vacancy. We anticipated our agenda. So, and I, and so the update, I think that update is to say that, uh, something has been posted. Do you have officially?
It took a while to get, um, the official resignation. And so, once we got that, Wendy got right into, uh, right into gear and has advertised the, you know, this, the school committee position and it did, it came out yesterday or the day before, so it is out asking for if anyone would be interested in putting their name in.
So it should be going to town hall, town website and channel fifteen at least.
And I sent a message to the parent community as well.
Oh, yeah. That's right, yeah. So.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
And I don't know if you don't, if you want to make this decision after we're a complete committee, but, uh, the question I have from Donna Hathaway is, did we appoint, did you appoint a collaborative, uh, to be collaborative educational services liaison for that? That was a previous member.
Right, so no, we haven't replaced that yet.
You want to wait until?
I think so.
Okay, we can wait. That's fine, thank you.
Yeah, I thought about that too. I think that's the only committee she was also, yeah.
Yes, Maisie is now a, a voting member for unit thirty-eight and she's school council. Yep, Greg is on the policy.
Okay. And then, um, for new business, uh, discussing recommendation from superintendent to convene an advisory subcommittee to meet roughly three times a year and advise her on goal development, mid-cycle and year-end progress on meeting the goals.
I, I've asked Greg if he would be the Sunderland rep on the stu, the superintendent's advisory committee. The reason why I asked for this, um, this subcommittee is, um, last year when I was new, I wrote eight goals and then I gave everyone a binder on all, you know, and how I addressed all the four dimensions of the job and every single element and, and so it was just kind of overwhelming and my feedback and my sense was too much, too much and make those goals simpler, more simple. So I did and, um, what had happened is, uh, not understanding, I have, you know, I have student goals and then district goals and then professional goals. So the student goals is, well, this doesn't look like, you know, and you have anything to do with it. Well, you're not doing the work. Well, no, because I'm the instructional leader, I do, everything comes from me. But the, the question was more on the budget and to get more, um, involved and we just had this discussion. Last year, my first year, uh, I watched how it was handled here. I was trained, I was a assistant superintendent, I was trained differently, uh, to do budgets differently and, um, to kind of come at them in a different way and, but I, there's a long, a long, um, tradition of doing, doing it this way and so I was really hesitant to say, oh yeah, I'm going to get, I'm going to change, I'm going to present this differently and I'm going to do this and that, uh, because of what people are used to. And in my short tenure here, people are not always used to a lot of change. So we went slow. Last year I was able to input a pay, you know, a cover sheet, all the people, their positions and who, what, when and where, so you could have an idea of how many, you know, and then you know, again, two point, two and a half percent for, you know, these kinds of raises and so that you can also understand that a lot of our money is not discretionary, it's set costs. But, you know, so I was really hard to commit to anything in front of twenty-four of my bosses, but then as I reflected, I thought, I get it, I get what you're asking, but I'd like to work in a small, a smaller group of, of my bosses and have them advise me on my goals and maybe if I can explain to one person on each of the five school committees that I have, which is a lot, uh, what it is I'm doing and how I am, um, reaching this goal and how I'm doing this element and how I'm doing this and that maybe they could help inform the school committee, you know, better than me writing a book that not too many people are going to read and, you know, it's, it's not as meaningful. So anyway, I'm, I'm asking for this, the other school committees have agreed.
Okay.
And I asked for, like, um, just, he's such a methodical thinker and I thought, he's an imbecile. Not that everybody else's isn't, but.
Are you, uh, game for this? Okay, okay. Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
And, you know, my, uh, you know, two cents on it is, in terms of the goal stuff is, um, um, I guess beyond the, um, the goals, the way that you would expect us to evaluate you on those at the end of the, you know, at the end of the year. And, and so, for example, because I, I mean, I've always found this superintendent evaluation process to be frustrating because I feel like I'm commenting on things that I really, I don't know, uh, how that the superintendent has really performed on that. I agree with you, like, at the, at the, at the high level, whatever this school does or doesn't achieve, I mean, the butt stops with you, um, you know, or all the schools in the district. But then, you know, what's happening, you know, what, you know, really was within your, you know, in terms of things that are, you know, you're setting out to do that you're saying, this is, you know, my priorities and how I'm going to go about it. And then, you know, and then evidence and that, that was, you know, happened or, you know, I have, I still have, you know, challenges and opportunities in this area or whatever. Um, and, and some of that, you know, for me feels like, you know, getting, um, again, you know, stuff from you, the people who, who kind of report directly to you, you know, in terms of here are going to be, you know, here are the things I'm working with, you know, the principals are on and my other people in my, you know, administrative team, curriculum, special ed, et al. Um, you know, here are the things that I'm doing with them this year and then at the end of the year, you know, how did that go? And, you know, maybe feedback from them too, because like, that's, I feel like, uh, you know, I'm so, I'm such a like distant, you know, observer of this at best, um, and yet that team, I, you know, I don't know how, I'm just surprised that that isn't part of the superintendent evaluation.
It's, it's hard because when you are in a position where you need to say no.
Mm-hmm. Really, they might not be happy and I can, you know, again, that, so, some people are going to be, it's not that they're going to be happy with everything that their boss, you know, did or said, but, you know, we, we, you know, we can.
Having teachers evaluate principals, you know, so I think, I think that's a slippery slope.
I see, I, yeah, I think, I think teachers should evaluate principals, but.
I think some explanation too about how, where the categories come from, because I know some is like from the state, right?
They're all from the state, everything I knew.
So I think an explanation of that would have been.
I sent an email to everyone.
Well, yeah, I mean, at the joint meeting, like when we were going around and around.
I didn't, yeah. I, I just, I had thought everybody knew the system because it's been in place since two thousand and twelve.
Yeah.
But I don't think so. I think we have newer people and I think people just didn't. And, um, but, you know, we can rectify, you know, we can take care of that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And they need to understand that their job too involves evaluating your performance. So if you have a list of strategic initiatives that are the things that you're trying to do and you drop the ball on something that's not on that list, they can still say that in their evaluation, you know, it's not like, this is the list of things that I'm doing for my job and if I do a great job on these, you know, you can't count anything else against me. That's not what it's about. You know, so some of, some of what got thrown out there was just really, uh, we, we do want to separate the taking out the trash, day job stuff, budgets, teacher evaluation, principal stuff from the strategic initiatives, what's your three to five-year plan on special ed and stuff like that. But, yeah, I mean, it's a matter of, of helping the school committee members also understand.
And, and that's, that's kind of where I am. We're all working for the same thing and I am doing the work, but it's hard to articulate it and then I thought, well, I'll put it all in a book and you'll be able to see it and that, that didn't really help. And, um, so I was, I, the, uh, the two chairs, the unit chair and the regional chair, but the regional chair said, simple next year, it was simple, transparent but simple, but, um, maybe it was too simple, I, I don't know. I did follow other people's leads, um, but that's fine. I've got eight pages now.
I think it's, it's, I, it's really tricky because it's hard, it's, it's, um, you know, I mean, you say your bosses, but it's not the, you know, or your constituents in a way, or whatever it is, but, but it's not your typical situation because, you know, we see you once a month, you know? It's not like, you know, you see Ben, you know, right? All the time, you see your team all the time and, and so it's not, it's really hard for us, um, to engage and, and, you know, understand, um, you know, your work. And it's so, so, and I, so I, I say like, I, I think it's not like, oh gee, you, you know, you failed at that, like, it's like, I feel like I've never been happy with the superintendent evaluation process as long as I've been on the school committee. I've never felt like, uh, I was in a process that, that felt like it could succeed.
It's a very complex job, having five school committees.
Yeah.
Having twenty-four school committee members, trying to make sure they all know what you're doing.
Right.
And asking for that level of trust that I do know what I'm doing and I'm very capable.
Right.
And when I'm on the camera and I got twenty-four people and I'm just trying to say, well, I, I do that, but, um, I'm hoping that my superintendent's advisory committee will help me.
I think that's great.
Be able to approach, you know, that kind of, you know, understanding for you so you really do have an idea of what it is I'm doing and, and how I'm dealing with it. And that's, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that.
So, uh, do we have a motion to approve recommendations from superintendent to convene an advisory subcommittee and to presumably, uh, not approve Greg to be, Greg got shocked to be on that advisory committee to meet roughly three times a year to advise her on goal development, mid-cycle and year-end progress on meeting those.
Some would.
Second? All right, all in favor? All right, you know us. All right, thank you. Committees. Any having? Frontier, we had a frontier, uh, last frontier meeting?
Uh, the last frontier meeting.
Is there one?
Yes, there was.
Sorry.
Did anyone here go to the MASC, MASs conference?
No.
I do have some information for you.
Yep, yep, yep. Well, do you want to do, uh?
I'm ready.
You ready? All right.
All right, the last meeting, uh, there was discussion about the Christian Lane property and, uh, a revised timeline for submitting the RFP to, to the property and trying to fit it in with Waitlist town meeting, uh, because if it, if it happened earlier, it gave them a better chance to plan out what to do with the process. We had presentations for trips to Washington DC, uh, to Italy and Greece, uh, and then we had a lot of discussion about the facilities and the possible bond request. And then we went into, uh, we heard about playoffs, uh, there was a soccer game going on outside during it, updates on the scores.
That's nice.
And then we had move into, uh, we, the superintendent's advisory committee, we discussed and voted that in and then we had to, uh, release the executive session minutes, which we'll have to do here too.
Okay, oh yeah, we have that.
It was a lovely meeting.
All right. Thank you. Danny, would you do the principal report?
Sure. On October twenty-fourth, uh, we hosted an engaging flute and percussion duo of Zara Lawler and Paul Fadul. Zara played the flute and Paul played the marimba. They performed at all of the elementary schools over the course of the week. Our PTO helped to sponsor the event and we also, um, there was a grant through the Chamber Music America residency partnership program that helped to bring them on. Very engaging performance, they performed a total of five times, um, across all grade levels here at Sunderland. Then the next day, um, on October twenty-fifth, our fourth grade kicked off, uh, our Cafe Sun for the year. In, in the past, we've, uh, with our combined lunches of grades three and four, um, grades one and two, grades five and six, we've had students from multiple grade levels performing during Cafe Sun, but the interest has just been so high for the performances that we're limiting each Cafe Sun to one grade to make sure we have enough time to fit the, uh, performances in. Over the summer, I was approached by the Sunderland Water District and they, uh, are generously offering some money to go towards a school project, um, and we were able to kind of use it at our discretion. Seeing that it is coming, uh, from the Water District, we wanted to put that money towards something involving water. Well, last school year, we started a school vegetable garden and students across all grade levels were in charge of, um, planting and tending to the garden. And so the next part of that project is to design a water capture system using the pavilion out back. So it'll include capture, filtration, uh, transport and storage so that we're kind of a, um, tackling a real world problem in, in, in water transport. So the, the. So, the, the plan is, each grade level is going to be in charge of some different phase of that project with the older students kind of overseeing what each grade level is doing. We're gonna bring in, look to bring in some local engineers to collaborate with. We've reached out to the UMass Color Guard just for some volunteer work. They were, they were here for our Veterans Day ceremony and they expressed interest in helping out for the project as well. So, it's a, it's a very big project and, but we're hoping to have it completed by the end of the school year, at least the beginning phases.
That's great.
And then, finally, last Thursday, November 9th, we held our annual Veterans Day observance ceremony. This is the ninth consecutive year students have participated in this ceremony. The event this year featured a flag folding demonstration, guest speaker, the flag was lowered to half-staff while taps was played by two Frontier students, Ella Dean and Phelan Kosky. And this year featured a, we had a flyover by two military helicopters during the middle of the ceremony, so that was pretty neat. After the ceremony, we always invite the veterans back to our school to visit classrooms, read, ask, answer questions from the students, and then eat lunch with the kids as well. So that's what's been happening. Upcoming events, we have third grade Cafe Sun tomorrow. Prior to our PTO meeting tomorrow night, we have started an early childhood playground committee, so we're in the beginning phases of kind of revamping the early childhood playground. So Tracy Zachary, who was one of the lead chairs for the rear playground, is gonna come and kind of do a presentation for us and kind of walk us through what, everything that went into the building, the back playground. School closes at noon, the day before Thanksgiving, and then the following week, we have our sixth grade doing Niveka, we have a Barnes &amp; Noble Book Fair, Picture Retake Day, report cards are going out, fifth grade Cafe Sun. Local musician Tyler Conroy is gonna be putting on an assembly for our students in the middle of December. We have our winter concert and then school closes for holiday break, December 22nd, which is a half-day of school. So lots going on. Any questions?
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah. All right, Carrie?
As I asked earlier, we did have the Mass Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents had their annual joint conference last week. Unfortunately, due to health concerns, I wasn't able to attend. These are some of the people that attended from our district. Some of the workshops they attended, including social-emotional learning, building and managing relationships and negotiations, special education transportation class, measures of student learning and growth, college and career readiness, MIAA challenges and successes, and 21st century leadership. So, from our reports, it was, it was very informative and a nice time. I wasn't there. All students in grades three to eight took the MCAS 2 and on the computer, they, so they made that transition. Louise Law will be here in December to share those results with us at the school committee and I'm very proud of Sunderland School. I intended the, a meeting with the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools last week with the results of a study entitled Supporting Student and Community Success: Updating the Structure and Finance of Massachusetts Regional School Districts. It was reported by the Office of the State Auditor, Suzanne Bupp, and I've included a handout in your file and one of the, there's many recommendations, it's not a binding study, it's, it's quite extensive, but they've recommended many things. And the reason why I'm bringing it to you, even though it's a regional school and we're not a regional school in Sunderland, is because it does impact Frontier and next month, I will be going to the Frontier School Committee and asking them to approve, I'm sending a letter to the lawmakers in Boston, the senators, and whomever has a piece in this, and requesting that the state fund regional transportation to the extent that they had agreed to, that the law says 100%. They, they have not been funding that at 100%. I think we're up to 60, maybe high 60s right now and, as you know, transportation is very expensive and becoming a regional, a regional district that does help with transportation and stuff. I just want you to be aware of what's going on at the regional level as well. And our new director of food service is Mary DeLusa and she previously worked at Deerfield as the cafeteria manager. She was an assistant manager at Whole Foods and she also was in food service at American International College. She's actually transitioning to the new position this week, she's all alone, today was her first day and I think she will be able to reach people, she certainly has the, the personality to get people to buy in and to, you know, work on her, to work with her and on her.
One, one of the first steps she's taken is having the kids help to design the menu. So ballots went out to our sixth grade students yesterday for the upcoming December menu. So we'll see what they come up with.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, it'd be great, maybe like, in the spring to have her come and, she could do that, give like some of her vision for.
She and I, we're also looking to decrease the amount of time students spend in the lunch line, so there's a couple extra salad bars in the district that we're looking to bring into the Sunderland kitchen, but first we need to get a smaller milk cooler. So that's the plan.
I'm hoping that she'll be able to make smoothies.
Yeah.
There's so much fruit that comes in and the kids sometimes hesitate to eat all that fruit, but the smoothies, you know, it's just fruit.
Yep.
And they're good. So that's all I have.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so, it's this executive session and, let's see, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, in order to comply with opening law for the purpose of approving and releasing executive session minutes. All right. Second? All right. All in favor?
You have the roll call?
I do.
Oh, that's right. All right.
Douglas Fulton?
Yes.
Keith Mifar?
Yes.
Greg Gotschuk?
Yes.
And Maisie Shak.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Night.